Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Lexington Planning Commission. This is our normal monthly meeting being held at Town Hall at 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. This meeting will be broadcast live on the Town of Lexington's YouTube channel. Speakers are asked to sign in the sign in sheet, identify yourself and your address, and please speak into the microphone. I am Frank Berry, the Chairman of the Town Election and Planning Commission. Other Planning Commission present member are...
Good morning, Sam Hendricks.
Good morning, Roscoe Kaufman.
Good morning, I'm Brian Amick.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Feit.
Good morning, I'm Joe Robertson.
Good morning, JT Stevenson.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Stuart Ford, Interim Town Administrator.
At this time, I'll do the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for this new day. Thank you for this together, time to come together as a, as a body for the town and, and plan the future. Be with us as we discuss the items on the agenda and be with those who are sick and those who need your healing touch. Be with those who protect us and serve us every day. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible).
I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any deletions to the agenda? I don't believe so. We have minutes. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Don't move.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We have no public presentations, no old business. Move right on into new business. Election of Commission Officers. Mr. Hanson?
Excuse me. Good morning. As you know, every year in July, we have to elect Chairman and Vice Chairman of the, or Chairwoman of the Planning Commission. So I will ask, excuse me, if there are any nominations for Chairman of the Planning Commission?
Do they have to be present?
No, I don't think so.
I nominate Frank Berry.
Really? Why did I not see this coming?
You didn't have to come this morning, Frank. I mean, they would have given it to you anyway, but...
Any other nominations? All in favor of Frank continuing to be Chairman of the Planning Commission?
Wow.
And we need a Vice Chairman. Are there nominations for Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission?
Nominate Jared.
Anybody else? Is there a second to that nomination?
They're all quick.
Any further nominations? Closed nominations? All in favor of Jared being the Vice Chair, please raise your hand. Okay. Item number one is complete. For another year. We can proceed. All right. First item on the, the second item on the agenda is review of the Mighty Car Wash being planned at 5436 Augusta Road. Mighty Wash Car Wash has submitted a site plan to construct a new facility at 5436 Augusta Road. The project consists of a 2,858 square foot wash tunnel with 17 vacuum stalls. Access to the site will be obtained from a non-standard driveway utilized by two additional businesses. Have a picture in your package of the driveway we're talking about. And I think we can put up an aerial photograph of that area we're discussing, too. This project was referred to the Commission due to staff concerns about traffic improvements needed for the project. Section 15406.14 of the Land Development Ordinance requires new development to install traffic control measures as deemed appropriate to mitigate the impact the development will create. In this case, staff recommended installing a D cell lane on Augusta Road, or in lieu of that, to combine the driveways with the adjacent property owner to create a single access that meets current standards. Unfortunately, neither of these recommendations were accepted. Otherwise, the project appears to meet the zoning and land development requirements. I provided you in our work session this morning, a list of some of the most recent projects in the town that have had similar circumstances that they've had to deal with in order to develop that required them to install D cell lanes or required them to purchase additional right of way. So staff feels like we're being consistent on this project as we have been for the last several years with regard to traffic improvements. And Randy is here and the developer here, if you have any questions. All right. The developer is here. All right. Would you like to say a few things?
Name.
Please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I do. My name is Evan Campin, and I reside at 178 City Flow here in West Columbia. So first off, I appreciate you guys taking the time to meet with me today, and thank you guys all for your service, and thank you to Randy for his guidance, and John and the rest of the town. So we're here to be a good steward. So I've, I've lived here, I plan on living here the, the rest of my life, and we're asking approval for our site plans and permit to be granted so we can start the project. We have exhausted all options based on the town recommendations. You know, we went to Mr. Pope, the owner of the property next door, as you can see by the, the letter that we have here, and he states that under no circumstance will he close his drive on Augusta Road. In addition, he will not sell or otherwise grant an easement or right of way on the portion of the property to Mighty Wash or anyone else for the construction of a D cell lane that would encroach on and require carving out a significant portion of the property abatement. We believe that improving the private driveway to 24 wide, providing a stop bar, center line, stop sign, and a 30 radian is material increase to what is existing and makes the driveway safer. In addition, we'll be taking out a non-conforming sign. We plan to invest $5 million plus with this development to build a state-of-the-art facility. In addition, we plan to employ 10 people. As evidence of our good faiths, we also took the recommendation of the town to avoid using high intense colors. In addition, we will also utilize materials such as brickstone as requested. We're here to be a good, good steward in the community. I, I live here, I want to be here the rest of my life, and as a sign, in our current location, we've been able to give $200,000 back, back to the community. So we're here to be a good steward in the community. Unfortunately, we've done everything that we can and taken every, every step possible, and if there's anything that you need or any questions, please let me know.
All right. Is there any questions, comments?
With the letter you provided from Mr. Pope, obviously he is not willing to participate. Your other option was staff, I think, had asked you about creating a single access lane there. Have you done a traffic study?
We have not done a traffic study, no. But most of the, all the car wash studies basically says that it's not a destination place, and usually the daytime traffic, you usually get about .5 of the average daily traffic.
Which equates to how many cars are you counting on coming in and out of there on a daily basis?
About nine, nine an hour. So the, I believe according to the 2023 study, there's 28,000 cars there, and then you've got to subtract us on the opening 12 hours, it's around 23,000 at .5 year around.
How do you subtract cars when you're adding car trips coming in and out of there?
Sorry, I'm talking about there's 28,000 cars per day. We're only open for 12 hours, so we got to only include the daily traffic.
I agree with you that a car wash isn't necessarily a destination, but I mean, this is a busy road, so a lot of folks will be coming from the interstate back into Town Lexington on their way home from work. A good portion of them will probably be making a right turn to use the Mighty Wash. Is that a fair assumption?
That is a fair assumption, but I also believe that the increase in the, the driveway to 24 width, providing a stop bar, center lane, and stop sign.
That's on the property. How do you project handling the issue coming on to the property, which is where we have heartburn with?
You're, you're saying that, can you repeat?
D cell lane that we've made out of the records that we just got this morning, out of 17 projects, 11 of them had to do, did a D cell lane. And 11 of those also have immediate access to an adjacent traffic light coming out of their property, if I'm not mistaken.
So the engineer might be able to provide more color, but my understanding, according to the DOT, is that they would not want a D cell lane there because of... Yeah, if you could.
Good morning. My name is Tyler Fields. I work with 4D Engineering, Civil Engineer on this project. As far as the D cell lane goes, I don't disagree with you that, yeah, that would definitely help traffic turning in for this project. Unfortunately, the DOT right of way stops at the back of the sidewalk that's there, and Mr. Pope isn't willing to sell additional land to add to that right of way, so we just can't claim eminent domain like DOT can, unfortunately, so we can't show improvements on someone else's property, basically. And then with his access off of Augusta Road that's there now, the stacking length for that right turn lane where cars would queue up to turn into the property would block his access, his current access, so he wouldn't be able to use it the same way that he does today. And as you can see in his letter, he wasn't really interested in combining driveways either, so it's kind of a, really a non-starter with Mr. Pope, unfortunately.
Well, I know, too, just this group over the last many years has tried to do everything we can to promote interconnectivity as well.
Yeah.
So, and we're not going to back off of that.
Yeah, no, I get that. And we, I talked to the Permit Office, DOT, about this, and, you know, it was just like, well, if this is, if we can't get this private drive, are you guys open to an Augusta Road connection separate? And obviously, they're not. With the private drive being there, they're also of the same mindset of connect everything into one access. So we knew that from the start, that's why we got easements to go on to that private drive. Just Mr. Pope's lack of wanting to provide the right of way to put a D cell lane or connect to the private drive to consolidate everybody into one just wasn't happening.
What's the spacing between the two driveways currently?
Between Mr. Pope's driveway and the nursing home driveway?
Correct.
I mean, effectively, nothing. It's probably five, six feet from radius to radius existing, so non-standard from a DOT standpoint.
Right. And I think because those are so closely spaced, I mean, it creates confusion with folks turning into and out of those driveways. We've definitely got a concern there. That's why we're, you know, asking for the consolidation of driveways. If that's not an option, you know, you're downstream and downhill from a traffic signal appears to be, you know what that distance is from the signal at Cedar Crest?
It's about 300-ish feet, I think, there, plus or minus.
Yes, I think we have concern with that as well. Folks slowing down to make that right turn with traffic going through that signal behind them. I think there's a potential for rear ends with the increased number of right turns associated with this proposal.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got anything else?
Well, we also have a problem with that private driveway existing right now. What's, what's in there? We don't know what's going to happen in the future. The rest of them increases, if the gym increases, then more traffic's going in and out of there. So that, that's a concern we have also.
Yeah, and that's, you know, unfortunately, since the first two options were something that we could, could show due to his lack of wanting to cooperate, bringing that driveway up to more of a standard for DOT specifications anyways, with, you know, 24 foot wide, 30 foot radiuses, adding the stop bar, this, all that stuff that's not there now helps that access function as a standard driveway. And I think as Evan said, I mean, the car wash, it does add some trips, but it's, you know, nine an hour. So we, you know, in my opinion, it doesn't, it's kind of, it, it's adding, but it's, it's almost negligible, just nine cars an hour isn't too much to that access, so. But yeah, appreciate you guys.
All right. Anybody else? Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Randy, you got anything you'd like to add from a traffic? As our tri- town traffic engineer, expert?
Randy Edwards, Transportation Director. The only thing that you haven't already seen is that, I mean, first of all, without a traffic analysis, I would, I would guarantee that a traffic impact study would show that there's a lot more than nine trips an hour coming in and out of a car wash. And, I mean, I've been in car washes where I'm the ninth guy waiting to get the car washed, so. So that's just not, I don't think representative of the volume. And I will tell you that we've already done some historical right turn movements there and have already seen upper 40s, 50 right turn movements during a peak hour going into the existing driveway. The other thing that I would just, I guess advise is that while you can look at like it's a stacking lane, but there's no opposition, so you're really not going to get any stack, you with me? That would then block the turf site driveway in that case. Then the only other thing to add is that we've met with this particular property owner on two occasions. First was in June 13, I mean, March 19th, 2021, and the proposed developer was advised that most any of these sites in and around town would require mitigation. And then again, on June 13th, 2022, and then we saw, we've not heard anything back from the developer until they presented their plan this past May. So...
The past, you say May?
I just believe this, yeah, I don't, I didn't have the date of when we got the call from the engineer, but they had pretty much seemed surprised that, oh, we need to take a look at this adjacent property owner, so there's been a lot of time passed where I think that we could have possibly even worked together for trying to make this happen, but it seems like we're just at the last minute, and it's already ready to go as it stands. So that's just where we're at, and you were provided with a summary of what we have worked to achieve, to help make developments happen. And these are generally compromises. They're not a first, they, you know, a developer does everything we want right out the gate. I mean, it's, we see the difficulties, we see the challenges, we work with them, we understand what they're looking for, and we, we try to get to a point where we can actually make something happen. I personally have never seen this letter that was provided, so this is a first, so that's... Yes, so... So this letter was not provided to us as, hey, let's sit down and talk about this and where we could go from here. Simply, this is how we're going to do it, and frankly, I do agree that, you know, there's improvements to the driveways certainly will help, but it's an existing bad condition. And so, like, it should be done now, whether there's additional trip or not added. You know, so that's kind of the, give you the feel for what its improvement will actually help with these additional trips. And, and like John stated, we've been charged with, you know, helping mitigate traffic in the Town of Lexington. That's the number one outcry for the last 20 years, and for a long time, nothing was done to a lot of these driveways, and that's how you ended up with two driveways that are virtually five foot apart. And so it's been our job and our take that, you know, we have to look out for the long term, and that's why we've kind of presented what we've been able to do and what we were asking on this property.
Thanks, sir. For the record, that letter is dated, the owner just has it.
Seventeenth.
So that, that nine car washes in the average, so there will be sometimes more and sometimes less, so I don't want to deceive the committee in any way, shape, or form. And at the end of the day, I want to be a good steward, so whatever I can do or need to do, as you can see, I mean, we've given back to the community, so I apologize to him if anyone or any shape or form did not feel that, so I apologize.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, before we make a motion, I would propose to developer two options. Either I'll make a motion to deny request, or I would give the developer opportunity to get a traffic study and continue meeting with staff to see if this, if this can be worked out. Based on information we have at this point in time, I would have to make a motion to deny request, but I'd give the developer opportunity to take that option if he wishes. You wish to take the option and get in a traffic study and work with staff?
Yes. Table. You can, instead of going through and getting denial on the record, would you like to withdraw and continue to work with staff until you can bring us something back that...
Yes, I would.
Can I, can I just clarify, bring you something back that includes a traffic study?
Yes.
And again, we've worked with staff diligently, as everybody on this sheet that we have, that has been in your position before has come through this group, has done. I think our staff is being pretty fair. Item number two, annexation of Hudson County Tax Map 430008007, located at 1201 West Main Street. These last three items should be fairly quick. All existing properties. Do I need to reread it? Sorry.
Satter Investment Properties owns 21.7 acres, located at 1201 Main, West Main Street, and has petition to annex the property. Jim Hudson Ford Dealership is located on the property, properties in town near this one are zone general commercial, protected residential, and limited commercial. West Main Street is classified as an arterial road. Gibson and Hendrick Streets are classified as collector roads, and Chariot Street is classified as a limited local road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the use of the property, the recommended zoning for this parcel is general commercial. The current road classifications are recommended to remain the same except for the classification of Chariot Street. This street should be reclassified to a local road due to its being upgraded from a dirt road to a paved road.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to annex as recommended.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number four, annexing Lexington County Tax Map 3500-03-057, located at 4766 Sunset Boulevard.
River Crest Presbyterian Church, PCA, owns two acres located at 4766 Sunset Boulevard, and has petition to annex the property. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the use of the property, the same zoning and road classification is recommended for this parcel.
This is next to Frank's car wash, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion? Everybody speak at once.
I'll move.
Motion, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number five, annexation of Lexington County Tax Map 449602042, located at 2437 Mineral Springs Road.
McWorder Revocable Trust owns 1.5 acres located at 2437 Mineral Springs Road, and has petition to annex the property. An office building is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial, and Mineral Springs is classified as a collector road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the use of the property, office commercial zoning is recommended for this parcel, and collector road classification is recommended for Mineral Springs Road.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Do you know the timing of upfitting or moving into this building? Because it would be nice to have that cleaned up after all these years.
We got plans this morning, apparently.
Good. It'd be nice to finally get that building cleaned up right there. All right. Do we have any other business? Information only. Mr. Stewart, congratulations on your interim appointment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, it's a pleasure to be with you. As always, we'll get to do more often together now for at least the interim. Do have a few announcements we'd like to share with you all and the community that's watching. Come out and join us for two movie nights at the Ice House Amphitheater. The first one is going to be Frozen Two, this, this Friday night, the 21st, at 8:30 in the evening. The next Friday, July 28th, we'll have Top Gun Maverick, beginning at 8:30. These are free events, no tickets required. On Friday, August the 18th, join us at the Ice House Amphitheater in welcoming Eddie Montgomery of Montgomery Gentry. They'll be on our stage. Gates open at 6:00 p.m. Tickets for Eddie Montgomery start at 40, are at $44 and can be purchased at icehouseamphitheater.com. We have a craft beer festival coming up on the 26th of August, that's at 6:00 p.m. at the amphitheater. Tickets are $30 in advance, $40 the week of the show, and $50 day of show. Ticket price includes a souvenir sampling glass, unlimited tasting of craft beer, and live music, and food will be available for purchase. And as we always want to remind folks, we have a wonderful market at the Ice House every Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. Local vendors have a variety of things for sale, and if you've seen, been there lately, you know that there's a tremendous variety and great things happening at the market. This includes fresh produce, flowers, pottery, woodwork, and much more, and this runs through September. And the only other thing I would add is just a reminder to everyone, but I guess before we meet again, school will open early this year, just in about three weeks or so, so keep that in mind. Over the next few weeks, we'll see a lot more folks on the roads in the morning.
Sorry. You just got to leave it on and mute me when I'm not. Um, any public comments relating to the items we adj... Um, any public comments relating to the items we addressed on the agenda today? No news media is present that I'm see? So with that, do we have a motion adjourned?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We are here adjourned. Thank you for watching the Town of Lexington Planning Commission in action, this meeting was held at Town Hall at eight A M. Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. A recording of this meeting will be viewed, can be viewed at the Town of Lexington YouTube channel. On behalf of the Town of Lexington Planning Commission and staff, I wish you a good day.